By eight, twenty twenty four. Mr. C. Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Councilmember Ratten.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais by way of introductions, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end of the dais, and city manager Pat Trudgeon is on my left at the other end. We will have other staff participating in the meeting, and they will be introduced as items come up on the agenda. We ask folks if you have a cellphone to be sure and silence it, or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. And with that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First on our agenda this evening, or next on our agenda, I should say, is approval of tonight's agenda. And I'll check with staff as I was doing. Are there any changes from a staff perspective?
No, there's none, Mayor.
All right. Any requested changes from the council this evening? Items to remove from consent for separate consideration?
No.
No? All right. We'll do a quick check with members of the audience on the consent agenda. I just mentioned Section 10 at the bottom of our agenda, the four items there. Typically, we take those up at the end of the meeting, which will be a long time from now, and there's a limited opportunity for input or discussion. But if somebody is here for one of the items in Section 10, items 10A through D, this would be a time to let us know, and we can remove that item from the consent, move it up earlier in the meeting so that you have a chance to either ask a question, make a comment, if that's what you'd like to do. Is there anyone here for an item in Section 10 of tonight's agenda? Does not appear to be the case. With that, then, we've got our agenda as presented. Is there a motion from the council?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder, to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on the agenda is our first opportunity for general public comment. We will have opportunities for public comment on agenda items as they come up, but we always do provide an opportunity at the start of each meeting for folks to speak on items that aren't on tonight's agenda but may be of interest to people in the community, or may be related to city business that once again isn't on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here to speak under general comment this evening? Doesn't appear to be the case. With that, then, we'll continue with our agenda, and our first item under more business-type items is our recognitions and donations. In this evening, we have a recognition or a proclamation related to the Golden K Kiwanis with our peanut campaign, and we've got representatives from the Kiwanis here this evening. And feel free, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and talk a little bit about the Kiwanis and what you do in the community and what the campaign is about. This is your chance.
Thank you. I'm Jim Boyer, a member of and immediate past president of the Kiwanis Northeast Metro Golden K Club. We are part of Kiwanis International, about 450,000 members worldwide in 85 countries. Our local Golden K Club here, which meets over in the Oval every week, we have, we donate to a number of organizations that are child and youth-oriented within the community. We also volunteer in a number of places. Since 2005, we've donated well north of $500,000 to youth and child-oriented causes within our community and logged tens of thousands of volunteer hours. This past year, through donations and monetary contributions, we've supported organizations such as Kids That Need Foundation, Feed My Starving Children, Ralph Reader Food Shelf, Keystone Family Services, which is also a food shelf, Every Meal, Bridging, Community Partners with Youth, Northeast Youth and Family Services, Salvation Army, and a number of others. In addition to that, we provided six scholarships of $1,000 each to graduates from Roseville Area High School. We also provided a $4,300 something grant to Little Canada School for needed school supplies. And I should also mention that a number of us volunteer in local schools as tutors in reading and math. To enable us to do the contributions to organizations that we know a lot about, because we're kind of in them every day, we conduct a peanut campaign. It's our primary fundraiser for the year. And so, every year about this time, we launch a campaign. It's basically a fundraiser, but in return for donations, we provide peanuts to those who contribute, to those who want them. And so, we're here tonight to ask the council to pass a resolution really kicking off our peanut campaign for 2024.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Boyer. We appreciate that information and all the work that Kiwanis does in the community.
Thank you.
And I've got the proclamation right here, so I will read it, and then a motion from the council would be in order. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the Northeast Metro Golden K Kiwanis Club headquartered in Roseville is an organization dedicated to improving the lives of children and youth, and whereas the Golden K Peanut Campaign provides businesses, professional entities, and individuals with an opportunity to help support community initiatives focused on children and youth and food insecurity, and whereas in order to help finance its many and varied programs, the Northeast Metro Golden K Kiwanis Club has requested a day be designated as a kickoff for its annual peanut campaign fundraiser, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Roseville hereby proclaims Monday, July 8th, 2024, which is today, as Roseville Golden K Kiwanis Peanut Day in Roseville.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Strong. To approve that proclamation, any discussion on the motion?
Just like to thank you for all, the list was so long. So, we see so many of those organizations over the course of the year, and we appreciate your ongoing support of these really wonderful things that call home in Roseville. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I would echo those sentiments. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve that proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and the campaign is officially kicked off.
And we'd like to give you the opportunity to contribute here to start our fundraising.
We'd be happy to do that, and we apologize for not having a more controversial agenda, so we have a lot more people here to help kick off the campaign. We'll work on that for next time.
Any reproach?
Be free.
I guess I could start on this one.
Thank you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Here you go. I'll get you your proclamation, too. Here's your proclamation.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think we're good, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you again.
So I think now I can skip.
With that, then, we'll continue on with our agenda. Next on our agenda is to consider an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses of certain types in the city of Roseville. And we have our community development director, Janice Gunlock, with us this evening to introduce this item as it relates to land use in the city. Ms. Gunlock, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is an interim ordinance. It would authorize a study and impose a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses. It would run into, it would run in effect until January 1 of 2025. As you know, during the 2023 legislative session, the legislature did legalize the use of cannabis. That included the creation of the Office of Cannabis Management, who was tasked to establish rules and regulations governing the legalization of cannabis. Part of their role was to create a model ordinance that would inform local governments on what types of rules and regulations they would want to impose. It included the ability for cities to do the moratorium and conduct a study. Those efforts would collectively inform whatever rules and regulations we adopt locally. At that time, city staff did not propose an interim ordinance or a moratorium because the effective date was January 1, 2025, so we thought we had time to wait for the Office of Cannabis Management to release that model ordinance and enact something before the effective date. However, during the 2024 legislative session, they sort of, they changed the, or they didn't change the law, but they enacted new regulations that would allow for certain cultivation licenses to be issued on July 24, I believe, is the date. The intent there is they need a product to sell on January 1 of 2025. So, given those licenses could be available in July, we think it's important at this point that we do move forward with the interim ordinance and enact the moratorium. This would give us time to review the model ordinance. I believe at the time we drafted this report, the model ordinance had not been released. I do believe it has since come out. We've barely had time to look at it, so I can't even speak to what's in it yet. But now that the model ordinance is released, we will have some time to review those rules, work something through likely the planning commission and the city council before getting something in place by that January 1, 2025 date. The interim ordinance that's provided in your packet has been drafted by the city attorney. There is also a resolution in your packet that would allow for publication of a summary in lieu of that entire ordinance. So, whatever action you take tonight would include adoption of the ordinance as well as the resolution, which requires a four-fifths majority vote. That's all I have, but I can certainly answer questions as well as the city attorney.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gunlock. I'll kick off the question just for some clarification. So this, once again, is an interim ordinance, which is a land use restriction, and that's different than, say, a moratorium on issuing of licenses or that sort of thing. Obviously, we don't have a scheme for licensing in place either, but I think the idea that the legislature had was that the land use control would be, you know, the means by which cities could put in place something to get their scheme in place before allowing the businesses essentially in the community. Is that correct?
The interim ordinance is related to the land use action, yeah. I can't speak to what the intent on the laws were related to business licensing. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. But what we're not doing is we're not enacting some sort of restriction on business license, because we don't even have a licensing scheme at this point yet. So, really, I guess, the only tool we have until that gets in place would be the land use regulation, as I'm understanding.
Yeah, Mayor, this is a land use tool. I will say, the licensing scheme will all come through the state. There would be very little authority for the city from a licensing standpoint.
Very good.
But this holds the status quo in Roseville until we have a chance to see what those model regulations look like, and maybe sit through another legislative session or part of one and see what comes up.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes, thank you. Just curious, this does not affect the businesses that sell the hemp products and the gummies and the drinks, correct?
Councilmember, Councilmember Schroeder, yeah, that's correct. This, getting a little bit into the weeds here, the definition of cannabis business specifically exempts what we had been calling low potency hemp, or had been, I can't even remember all the names, but it doesn't exempt those lower potency products. That's exempted from the definition in state law, which carries through to this ordinance.
So just to clarify, it does exempt from this ordinance? It exempts those products from this ordinance?
Correct. This ordinance applies to cannabis businesses as defined in state law. We had to broaden that definition a little bit because of some confusing things that happened at the legislature to, from a legislation drafting standpoint for cities. But yes, this just adopts that regulate, that definition of cannabis business. The definition of cannabis business in state law does not include the lower potency products.
And the only reason I asked for the clarification is because you had said this doesn't exempt them. You just, you meant to say it does exempt them, so I just wanted to clarify for anybody listening that heard that. Thank you. Is that it?
The only other thing I wanted to mention is, I was at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference a week ago, and they had members of the Office of Cannabis Management, and they couldn't answer any questions that the cities were asking because they don't even have it all figured out yet. So I think it makes sense, not only for us to have some more time, is to have them to have more time figuring it all out, too. So I think this makes a lot of sense.
Other questions? Councilmember Ratten.
I have a wording thing in Section, sorry, Section 8 of Attachment 1. Turning to line 161, it says, "This ordinance shall take effect and be in force and shall expire on January 1st." I think that that should be somehow separated apart. And so, working with the attorney here briefly right before the meeting, would add these words: "This ordinance shall take effect and be in force upon passage and publication and shall expire," and then continue. So the words "upon passage and publication" would be added after "in force" and before "and shall expire."
I think that makes sense. Otherwise, it's a one-day ordinance, basically.
Very exciting one-day moment, yeah.
Yes. Right. Other questions or suggestions? I did want to also clarify that this, once again, from a land use regulation point of view, we don't regulate, like, homegrowing of products in this category. We only regulate the, essentially, the land use as a business-type use, as I understand it, other than, we have certain restrictions on home businesses in our zoning code already about just general things that home businesses can and can't do, related to all sorts of things like signage and those types of things. So they would apply if it's a home business that's doing growing operations. But as I understand it, this interim ordinance is really about land use that would otherwise be regulated by the city.
Correct, Mayor. Again, we're going back to the definition of cannabis business. So it's regulating the business operations.
Got it. Thank you. All right. If there aren't other questions from the council, we'll open it up for any public comment on the proposed interim ordinance. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right. Does not appear to be the case. With that, we have the two requested actions. One is the adoption of the interim ordinance, and I would suggest we do so with the change in language as outlined by Councilmember Ratten. Is there a motion related to the ordinance?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Ratten. I heard first. With that, discussion on the motion. Councilmember Graff is the maker?
No, I think that it was explained pretty well by Ms. Gunlock. I think that this makes sense for us to research it further, do a study, so that we find out what's appropriate for Roseville. Sounds like other cities are doing the same thing, so I think this is prudent.
Councilmember Ratten is the second.
I agree and have nothing to add.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? With that, we've got the motion before us to adopt the interim ordinance as presented with the language change outlined by Councilmember Ratten earlier. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And then we've got the resolution requesting us to support publication of a summary of the ordinance for purposes of the actual publication. That's allowed by state law, although it has to be passed by a two-thirds majority, which in our case is four-fifths with a five-member council. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution permitting publication? Moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, meeting the four-fifths requirement, and we are permitted to publish a summary of the ordinance. Thank you again to staff and our attorney for the work on this and being vigilant for the potential need for this interim ordinance after, as was noted, we had declined to do one initially. With that, then, that concludes our business items this evening. We would proceed, then, to consideration of city council minutes. We've got the minutes of our June 17th and June 3rd meetings, or in some cases, people might say the June 3rd and June 17th meetings. Those have been presented, and corrections and notifications have been provided to staff, and those updates have been made. I would just note there was one small technical correction that I communicated back to Ms. O'Brien, and that's already been incorporated into the draft that I think has been circulated since then. So that was something that came after the first set came out. With that, do we have a motion on one or both of those minutes as presented?
Some move for both?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Schroeder moves approval. Councilmember Ratten seconds that motion. No changes have been suggested. I should have checked if there were any changes or corrections. Seeing none, we've got the motion before us, then, to approve both of those sets of minutes from June 3rd and June 17th meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those minutes are approved. That, then, brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Trudgeon, would you give us a brief description of those items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very short consent agenda tonight as well. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $4,5,709.92. Agenda item 10B approves the purchase of a new sanitary sewer vacuum truck for Public Works. This purchase will replace the vacuum truck purchased in 2015, which has needed numerous repairs over the years. Due to the long lead time, staff is requesting that the order be placed for the new delivery and payment of the vehicle in April of 2025. To help offset the cost of the purchase, the existing vacuum truck will be sold for $165,000. Item 10C approves a short-term rental license for 257 South McCarran's Boulevard. Then finally, item 10D approves entering into agreement with Metropolitan Council, receive a clean water fund grant in the amount of $27,500. That will provide water efficiency rebates that the city can offer to residents. That purchase approved dishwashers, toilets, closed washers, showerheads, and replacement irrigation controls.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent items?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to approve those items. Discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to make sure that on 10C, the short-term rental that the owner of 257 South McCarran's is reminded of the occupancy limit. According to online reviews, the facility may not always have been utilized in that way. So just a reminder that they should, if they're not aware or familiar with those regulations, that they take a look at those and make sure they know how to abide by the occupancy setup.
And worth noting also that we did update our requirements for the short-term rental licenses in our last go-around on that. So there were a couple of other requirements that are new to the code, too, so that'd be good to make sure that as people renew their licenses, they're made aware of those, and I'm sure staff is doing that.
We do, but we'll reinforce that.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Right. Other discussion? The only thing I would add is thanks to the staff and for going out for this grant with Met Council. I think that's a great opportunity to help people out with some of those water efficiency measures in the community, and I remember talking about that at the time when we were going out for it. So it's good to see that we've got that in place. With that, we've got the motion to approve those items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. Mr. City Manager, would you review the future agenda for us, please?
Yeah. So we're going to be in a stretch of meetings here on the next couple of Mondays. So next Monday, July 15th, we'll start off with an EDA meeting. You will be receiving the 2025 EDA budget request. This is just the introduction of that budget. No actions needs to be taken that evening. We also will consider sharing, or will accept, I'm sorry, will share information for you to consider accepting proposals to conduct a housing needs assessment and study. That's something staff has brought forward before in trying to combine the traditional housing study with some other services as well. So we did get some responses, and I think we'll have a good discussion when we go from there. Then also more of a, more of a technical business item. We need to approve the collateral assignment for Oasis. This is part of the permanent financing and just some paperwork that we need to sign off on. We'll then transition into the work session, and we'll receive the capital improvement plan for 2025, 2044. As you know, this outlines all the future capital projects, and we'll talk about kind of the funding, where we're at with all those funds, and something that we continually look at, review, and so this will be your first review of that. And we'll have staff here to do an all-department equity update. Moving on to the 22nd, we will have a joint meeting with Public Works, Environment, and Transportation Commission. I know one of the topics they'll be bringing forward is agreeing to go, kind of an update on where we're at with that. I think we're pretty much primed now to have that ordinance be considered by the council, actually taken. We also, we're still working through this issue. I don't have an answer right now, but the recycling cart contract, as you know, we held that off due to some changes in funding from the county, so we need to have that sorted out. And then on top of that, we would look to, assuming we have that worked out, to issue the recycling services request for proposals that night. But we do need to have that component figured out with the carts before we issue that, so that will work hand-in-hand. And then on August 5th, a couple of things. We just want to bring back some information about the fire department staffing study. As you know, we talked about that. The suggestion from staff was maybe see what services could be provided by third-party consultants. We've gotten some initial information back from them, so we'll report back to them. And that's all we're planning on really doing, just report back, and we can talk about some next steps after that. And then hopefully, we will be awarding the contract for the strategic plan consultant. We will be doing interviews, staff, as well as Mayor Rowe and Councilmember Schroder on April 18th and, I'm sorry, July 18th and 19th, and hopefully we'll have a recommendation ready to go for August. And that's the future agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions on the future agenda or other agenda items, Councilmembers' late requests for future meetings? Councilmember Strong.
That might not have fit into that.
But thank you for homing it.
Yeah. I can wait if you'd like to finish that. I have another comment.
Oh, is it under, like, announcements and things like that? Got it. Okay. Any other questions on the future agenda or items to suggest? All right. Other council reports, announcements, and communications? Councilmember Strong.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone who had something to do with Rosefest for their participation, and especially a huge thanks to Matt Johnson for executing a really lovely event and that amazing report on Monday morning at 6:20 after a very long weekend. So really thankful to him for the efforts. I felt like there was a little bit of complaints in the neighborhood about, but really it was very minimal compared to what it could have been, and I think it was because it was really well, just everything seemed to flow really well. So I wanted to make sure that that was a strong word of thanks for that piece in keeping. And I would love, I'm sure that there's somewhere, where can people look to find out information about road closures on our website?
We do have some information. I'll get that link for you.
Okay. And so, that might be more reliable than calling their council people.
Try to keep it updated. It does change, but we know the broad strokes of what's happening.
You're talking about construction-related?
Yeah. This morning, somewhat unexpectedly for the neighborhood, the intersection of B and Hamlin was closed with no way to get north or south on it, so.
And 36 in Cleveland gets closed, and then that's all, and then it's closed.
Yeah, and the on-ramps of 30, from Hamlin to 36 has been intermittently closed. So just it'd be good if folks had a place where they could look. Some days, it's updated on the Google Maps, and some days, it's not, so.
Yeah, and in that particular project, that is accounting that project. So sometimes there is a discrepancy.
Accounting state decisions.
Yeah. I was gonna say, with the counties, I know the county's project website doesn't always seem as robustly up-to-date, as I've checked that with, when I've got questions about it. I know the state's Highway 36 project website is good, and you can actually sign up for updates, and you can actually sign up for updates, and you, I've been getting the emails about when they're doing the closures in 36. So that's been helpful. And I would obviously encourage, anybody can sign up for those, and you just go to MinDOT and find your project, basically, so. But that doesn't help with the county projects, so I think if we can try to help, you know, with that, facilitating that communication, that would be good.
Or even if we can link our site to something so that people only have to go to one place, you know, they can link it to the state.
Or at least a number, yeah.
Or somewhere to ask, especially durations of things that haven't been signed up till now, like, how long will that be out? So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anything else, by the way, of communications, announcements? Councilmember Schroeder?
I guess I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, and what I'm going to hand out is the recap of the things that were top issues for the city that didn't get done at the state level, name a lot of it. But the governor was actually at the conference, and he did mention that he was going to try to have bonding as his number-one priority going into the next session, but of course, we know he can't do it alone. But he did say he, this was a priority for him, because I know that was something that Roseville really was hoping to get done. But it talks about a number of other areas that the league had been working on and where it's at. So I just made copies. There's a copy in the back there for people who want to see it. Otherwise, I have copies for everybody. And I think Rachel was there. She did a presentation, and I said, and thank you, Rachel. So I'm assuming you got a copy of this?
I have all the stuff.
Add in all the notes.
You've been keeping tabs on the legislative session.
And on Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Yes, that was her main job.
Hey, what happened at Rochester?
Worrying about here. There's a whole new side.
Bobby had a great meeting today.
Yes.
Didn't push the button yet.
It was good. It was, it was educational. But like I said, they, you know, we, they did have people from the Office of Cannabis Management, and there's a lot of questions out to them, and I'd say probably 98% of the questions they couldn't answer because they didn't know yet. And so that's very fresh. So, so there's quite a few things. Anyway, so this is a recap, so you don't have to slog through the whole website to read about it. It's kind of a cheat sheet right here. Thank you.
And thank you for attending. All right, other announcements?
I could just give a little update on Northeast Youth and Family Services. I am no longer the chair as of July 1st. But in my two years, it was a good experience, but quite a lot of heavy lifting there. And we have an excellent new chair, Jennifer Fink from New Brighton. And we have, I think it is five new board members, and it was really interesting to see. We're intentionally expanding the people on the board to have more voices there. So that is real, really a positive step.
Right. And we heard a report, Pat and I were at a city manager and administrator meeting this afternoon in the rain in a park in Little Canada, and despite the rain, we were able to have a good meeting. And one of the things we heard from folks in the know about NYFS was that it sounds like the budget for next year is actually going to be a net positive budget, which-
I'm taking total credit for that.
Well done, because I think in all the years that I've been following NYFS, that has never been the case before, so.
Good job, Lee.
Very good CEO we have now, Angie. She's really excellent. She knows what she's doing. She's got a good plan, strategic plan going forward, so.
Great. Well, and that's with, I think, expanding some services, too, so that's-
Exactly. And rightsizing other services that were kind of dinosaurs that have been along too long, around too long. And still providing excellent services to the youth in, in our communities.
Absolutely. All right. With that, the only other item on our agenda this evening is to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Hatton to adjourn. No discussion on that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 6:33 PM. Everybody gets a chance to enjoy the rest of their summer evening.